Thank you. Nick Rassiopi from the law firm of Riker Danza here again representing Red Bull Arena, Inc. Let me first say we're always happy when we're back. This is the town hall of our new home, and we feel even more at home when we have technical difficulties. Anyway, so we are here tonight, as I think most people know, for amendments to the November 2022 site plan approval and to amend the timing schedule of the general development plan approval. That's really it. The purpose, and Mr. Amorosa is going to speak, get further into the purpose of the amendments, but essentially, as the Red Bulls program for the property evolved and reduced, so did the size and the scope of the proposed facility. Again, the professionals will go through this in further detail, of course, but in essence, we are seeking really three categories of amendments. The first, to remove one floor of the main building, except for a small area to house the mechanicals inside. They were outside, we're bringing them in. So you'll see that bump in the building, the architect will go through that. There's changes related to that reduced area and the reduced building and scope, such as a reduced and modified loading area. You'll see those. And then finally, some changes to the landscaping, which puts the focus on the buffers, because we know they're important, and reduces landscaping in some of the other areas and trees where they're really not needed because there's a lot of buffers already existing. There's some smaller changes, of course, which, again, the professionals will talk about, but those are the major items. That's really it. We are not asking to, because I've heard some rumors, we're not asking to extend the time of the lights. We're not asking to put lights in any new area, change the lights in any way, add any fields. We're not asking to do any of that. In fact, I want to stress that we will continue to comply with, and are not asking for any changes to the conditions, which are already included in that November 2022 site plan approval. And so as typical, and as pursuant to the MLUL, we would ask to keep the public questions to the amendments, to what we're seeking here tonight, and not to things that happened in the past. So if there are no objections, we have three witnesses tonight. First, Mr. Amorosa will give an overview of the purpose and nature of the requested amendments. Then Brent Cutshall of Gensler, the architect, will discuss and illustrate the requested architectural changes to the facility. And then finally, Rich Barrington, the engineer of WSP, will discuss the engineering details as well as the revised landscaping plan. Now, one suggestion I have, and obviously, we defer to the board, but for efficiency's sake, since Mr. Amorosa is really going to give an overview of what we're asking for, and then the professionals, the architectural professional, the engineer professional will get into the details, I thought it might be more efficient to wait for, for example, the architectural questions until, not after Mr. Amorosa speaks, but till after the public gets to see the renderings that the architects show. And the same thing then with Mr. Barrington. So what I would suggest is that we defer questions of Mr. Amorosa until the architect goes, and then they could ask questions of both Mr. Amorosa and the architect, and then after the engineering professional goes, Mr. Amorosa and the engineer. I think that would be more efficient, but of course, we defer to the board.
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable.
Exactly. We'd have to say that a number of times.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, if I may, certainly well within the discretion of the chair and the board to do it that way, and particularly since Ms. Rassiopi said, made it clear that when the questions are asked of the architect, they can also be asked at that time of Mr. Amorosa, who, if I understand correctly, is going to be doing the broader view, not the more detailed view.
I would like to also for asking questions of Mr. Barrington that may relate to some of the overview questions.
Oh, of course, same thing. That's what, yeah, I agree.
So we'll separate two rounds of questions.
Oh, absolutely.
Both are questions can be asked of Mr. Amorosa.
Yeah, he can be available for both, along with the engineer and the architect respectively.
Of course, yes. So, Mr. Amorosa, oh, I think, I don't know if you've been, you haven't been sworn in yet.
Jim? We can't share yet.
Are you logged into the Zoom?
We're logged into the Zoom, whereas, yeah, can't share this screen.
But did he change the source?
No. Yeah, okay, but I should be able to share from here.
You want to swear on the witches? Jim stepped out, so he'll be back in a second. Or you could swear in separate.
I could swear everybody in, and we'll get Jim.
There he is, there he is.
Any cheers? Well, all those who will be testifying, including our board professionals, please raise your right hand. If all of you swear to God or affirm that testimony about you gave us the truth, the whole truth, and not be but the truth. Thank you.
I do.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, procedural thinking to mind with help. And so just to make clear, when the matter is, when we come to our vote, I believe it would be prudent to vote twice sequentially versus a...
Steve, your mic's not on.
When we get to the vote, and applicant's counsel, Ms. Rassiopi, I think when we... Yeah, when we get to the vote, since there is going to be an amendment to the GDP, as was noted, the timing schedule, as well as an amendment to the site plan approval, I think it should be two separate votes, primarily for the purpose of having, in the event it's an approval as to both, having the GDP amendment approval first sequentially, and then the site plan approval second. Vote, that is. I think that that would be a prudent course, because the GDP was amended first before the site plan approval occurred, and statutorily, that would be the appropriate sequence. I don't know if I could have explained it any more confusing, but I think...
Did you see the glaze?
Believe me, it was not my intention to make it as confusing as possible, but I do do what I do.
You have to understand that he's buying time here.
Thank you for the defense, committee man, right? I owe you. The one-two. On the vote, on the case, the actual presentation can be contemporaneous.
We're having trouble sharing.
I've run out of material, Mr. Chairman. I know many have hoped for this day, but I, no one actually saw it coming.
Well, there is song, there's always song and dance.
Nobody wants that.
How about you take maybe shut down and try to...
The public can't see those. They're too small.
I can barely see them, and I'm right here.
Yeah, let's go direct again.
We're only using, he's only using Zoom one plan. First.
If they're on Zoom, they can't, they can't comment on it, so.
He still hasn't shared the screen. Maybe he just can't, maybe he just can't share.
Rassi is in favor of the project. That is the F W S. Yes, this thing for some reason is not connected, so I think there's a problem with our cockons on the disc.
They're testing for the generators.
But I don't know why they're sharing the screen all of a sudden. It wasn't...
Oh, they have a...
He's going to keep sharing from that. He's going to have, somebody's going to have to text. Yeah. How do we communicate? I guess maybe it's...
John, J O H.
There we go. Okay, they just had the joint.
We have the first one up.
Okay, we are ready. Mr. Amorosa, are we ready? Yes, I believe we are. Okay, Mr. Amorosa, before you get started, would you give the board just a little bit history of your involvement with this project and how you represent Red Bulls here?
And very first name and a business address. Okay.
Sure. It's John Amorosa, A M O R O S A, 1207 Reading Avenue, Cape Town, New Jersey.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
And for, from 2007 to 2021, I was a director of construction for the New York Red Bulls and Red Bull Arena Incorporated, involved with this project, I'd like to say since 2000.
Did you get closer to the mic?
Oh, sorry. Does that work better? All right, no worries. So from 2007 to 2021, I worked for the New York Red Bulls as director of construction for both the Red Bulls and Red Bull Arena Incorporated. And I like to say I've been working on this project since 2007. So we started out, when I first came to the organization, looking for a place to build a new training facility. Ultimately, we settled on a temporary home in Hanover Township where we currently operate. From the time we opened that facility, we recognized that it was not large enough to handle all of the programs of the team and of the full organization, including the academy and the youth programs. So we constantly started looking for a new site, and it took us until 2020 to locate this particular piece of property. And I've been involved with the planning and design of the project since the very beginning, and I was involved with the planning board testimony back in November of 2022 for the project. So I like to say I've been living with it for the last almost 21 years or so, whatever it is. I can't do the math. I'm an engineer, I need a calculator. Seventeen years, seventeen years. Thanks, Paul.
So thank you. And would you give the board the benefit of the reasons why we're seeking these amendments, the programmatic changes that inform some of the revisions we're seeking here tonight?
Sure. As with all projects, there's an evolution that occurs. You know, you're at a point where you think you understand exactly where you're going, and you want to bring everything to the table and get it approved. But then you realize as you're going through it that not everything needs to come to the table. And one of the things that we looked at, there was a business decision made to leave the Red Bulls, the New York Red Bulls' front office operations in Harrison at Red Bull Arena. And that's just very specific, because most of the work that that organization does is circles around what happens at the arena. Ticket sales, communications, public relations, everything surrounding that operation really needed to stay where it was. So that was the first thing that happened that reduced the headcount at the site, which made us realize that we should do something. And when we did that, we decided that the third floor was no longer necessary in the building. Upon seeing that the third floor was no longer necessary, we looked at reducing the building, and of course, that snowballed into other changes with the architecture then having to follow suit. So Mr. Cutshall will get in more detail about that as we go later on into his testimony. So what happens when you start reducing employees? It reduces the number of meals and things that are served at the facility, the amount of traffic that is coming in. So it cuts down on the amount of deliveries that are necessary to bring into the site. So with the reduction of deliveries and employees and meals, the delivery count went down. And what we realized is that we had overdesigned the loading dock area, and it was no longer efficient or no longer justified by the business case. So we had to look at some ways of changing that up to bring it more in line of what we were actually going to be doing at the site and what the type of deliveries that were going to be held, et cetera, down the line. So, you know, with those decrease in deliveries, we realized that truck counts were going to go down. Smaller trucks would be coming to the site, because one of the other things that we were counting on is if the youth programs portion of the Red Bulls organization moved to the facility, they get a lot of deliveries around items for camps, which includes balls. They get somewheres in the neighborhood of like 100,000 soccer balls delivered every year. It's a crazy number that they get delivered, because anybody, you know, they serve somewheres in the neighborhood of 50,000 youth every year, and every kid that attends a Red Bull camp gets a soccer ball. Now, they're all not the full-size ball that you see on the pitch, but they're, I think they're called a number five ball. It's a smaller ball. But those types of deliveries would not be coming to this facility. They would continue to go to Red Bull Arena in Harrison, and the storage of that would all occur there and continuing that way. Additionally, they get a lot of T-shirts and other things that are handed out to the kids, and all of that would still also go to Red Bull Arena. So all of those truck counts went away. And so we're looking at now that just, you know, the deliveries to maintain the meal operation and the deliveries that would normally come to a facility, US Mail, FedEx, UPS, things of that nature. So with that, you know, we looked at the operation of it, and, you know, one of the things that was talked about in the TCC was limiting the hours of operation to the loading dock. And we agreed that that could be easily accomplished from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We can stay within those parameters without any difficulty. And we would also adhere to all the township noise ordinances around, you know, extraneous noises occurring in those locations. With that, you know, what we were talking about is the number of deliveries, and really, the key amount of deliveries is probably going to be more than way of the normal deliveries. You know, UPS, FedEx, and the mail will come every day, and sometimes twice a day. But those are the type of trucks that will be making most of the deliveries. For food service, we're looking at the one to two times per week trucks would be delivering non-perishable food items, and maybe two or three times a week, there would be deliveries of perishable items. Now, these trucks are probably more on the line of a UPS truck, and maybe slightly smaller with the single or double-axle box truck, or a very short, you've seen them around the Cisco trucks. If you ever go through Morris Town, you see them delivering to the restaurants, the shorter Cisco trailers. They're about 36 feet, I believe, is the dimension on them. So that's the kind of thing that would be happening there. With trash and recycling, that'll also decrease, because obviously, we have less headcount, less meals being served, less other items being, having to disposed of. So we're still looking at that. That would be a removal of trash and recycling twice a week. Usually, we try to organize that so it's on a Monday and a Thursday, so that, you know, you get the weekend, and then you get the weekend, or you're empty for the weekend again. So we'll probably look at that twice a week. And we would also limit those pickup hours to within 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. One of the things that we realized that by moving the loading dock to the ground level, that we would have to create, increase the buffering along Stockton Drive to provide a better screening for it and to limit its exposure. So you'll see, Mr. Barrington will point this out, that we increased the height of the berm along Stockton by four feet to accomplish this, along with adding additional plantings to create better screening along that side of the space. I mentioned that the third floor, oh, one of the things that is a benefit of this, by changing the loading dock location, we reduced the number of driveways on Prescott from two to one. So everything on Prescott would go in and out the one driveway, as opposed to two driveways relatively close to each other. One of the things I had mentioned about the third floor being reduced in size is, you know, we eliminated the business case for it with the first, excuse me, the front office operation staying in Harrison. And also, we had looked at in the previous approval of changing it into a regeneration space, which would be kind of a dormitory space for players to recover overnight or things like that. In further discussion with the sporting side of things, it was determined that that really was not something that was a necessary, it was a nice to have, but it wasn't necessary. So we decided that it was a good opportunity to reduce that third floor down to just, to cover the mechanical spaces. Now, one of the things, previously, those mechanical spaces were still on the third floor, but they were in a penthouse area at the south end of the building. Now, they're more towards the north end of the building, as you'll see in the presentations of the, and renderings. They're undercover underneath that third floor roof. So they're, you know, it is a third floor, but it's really just a mechanical penthouse, and it was a way of disguising and hiding the mechanical equipment on the roof. Nick mentioned that we would be doing something in terms of landscape reduction. And, you know, several things that happen with any design, as you're going through it and you're talking to the actual landscape contractors and nurseries that will be participating in a project, you find out that they're very concerned about supplying you with any trees that are of the sizes that were originally specified, because they're really concerned about their survivability once they're transplanted. Larger trees do not survive very well when they're transplanted. So it's more advantageous to transplant smaller trees or younger trees is really what it is. So that was one of the things that we looked at, is how can we increase the survivability of trees by going with some smaller trees in some locations. We did also look at the section, and this will get pointed out, the section on Stockton, where we're eliminating some trees, but it was primarily to maintain the views along Stockton, as opposed to coming off of Columbia, there were several rows of trees that were eliminated in that direction. We'll see that later when Rich does some of his presentation. And finally, the one thing that I need to mention is we talked about the GMP, or excuse me, the GDP. My contracting hat came on there for a second. The GDP required to be updated, because the timing schedule in it has changed a little bit from when that was done in, I believe, 2021. And mostly, the changes are it's just moving some of the elements into the correct phases. We're not changing the timeline at all of the project. It's just, it was just necessary to reorder, like, one of the things, we had the residential academy dorm was in phase one, and it's really in phase two, so we just had to move that down. So it was just a reordering of that. That's the change to the timing schedule in the GDP. And we still anticipate that phase one of the project will be completed in the summer of 2025. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Cutshall to make his presentation.
So I have no further questions of Mr. Amorosa. I don't know if the board wants to also wait for the architectural, okay, good.
Next slide, please.
Well, are you going to talk about this?
I can start with that one.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, we did have, I guess, an exhibit up, right? So, so the, thank you for, it's a rendered site plan, the original one? If we can go back one?
Back one slide?
Back slide. The, so, even if it was more than 10 days ago that it was submitted, why don't we call it Exhibit A1? Or is this whole thing going to be a package?
There's two packages.
Two packages? So we could call the, do we know how many pages?
Yes.
I've got page numbers on it, so we are 10 on the first package.
Okay, so A1 could be a 10-page compendium of slides, and they could go by page number. So we just, we're previously speaking about page one of Exhibit A1, and I don't know if we're staying there or moving on, but I'll turn it back over to the witness.
Before we get started, please give your name and address for the record.
Brent Cutshall. Business address is 1011 South Congress Avenue, Austin, Texas, 7874. Cutshall, C U T S H A L L. First name Brent.
And Brent, would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience and projects of this nature that you've worked on for Gensler?
Yep. Registered architect for, going on 24 years now. Work in Austin, Texas, office of Gensler Sports Practice. So we are a studio focusing solely on sports projects here around the United States and internationally. Been working on the Red Bulls project for the last two and a half years. I joined schematic design phase very early on, been on board as the project manager since.
Then your education?
Bachelor's in architecture from the University of Florida and a master's in architecture from the University of Texas.
What is that, you admitted as an expert?
And I may not have heard it, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I may not have heard it, but are you licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I'm not. I'm licensed in Florida and Texas.
Okay.
So as you know, the architectural plans that were submitted was by a colleague of Mr. Cutshall, who's here tonight, Mr. Pauda.
Yes, correct.
And he signed and sealed the plans.
Okay, and you worked with him under his supervision?
Okay, and you were, you worked with him under his supervision?
Absolutely.
Or vice versa?
Yes, so I specialize in the sports side, he's the local architect. We have an office here in Morris Town.
Understood, and just curious, have you been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture by any land you sport in this state or any state?
Yes, in Texas.
In Texas, not yet, at least in New Jersey?
Correct, not yet in New Jersey.
And I and no court in the state of New Jersey?
No.
Yeah, okay, okay, defer to the chair.
Yeah, no, I think we'll go accept it. We'll go ahead. Give us a background and overall supervision of the firm.
Certainly well within the discretion of the board to find him as an expert through assistant process. As opposed to laypeople who are not architects. All right, okay, so you're accepted, please proceed.
And so would you give the board the benefit of the architectural revisions, details of the amendments that we're seeking?
Yep, all right, I'll ask for the next slide, page two of the package. And generally, what you're going to see here today is a presentation of a series of images and renderings that generally start with our original view that was presented back in fall of '22, followed by a proposed view. That way, we can speak specifically to the changes. So this aerial view of the project was original, you'll remember this. So we'll go to the next view.
That's page three.
Next page, please, page three. And this is the updated view of the rendering. So things to note that we should point out are the change in the three-story height to two-story for the main building A. The location of the loading dock, can I get up and point?
Please do.
Be too far.
Is this microphone working?
Yes.
Okay, good.
You gotta press the button.
They also come out of, I believe, the
How's that work?
Yeah.
Is that working or not?
No.
Is that on?
Yes. Press the button.
All right, that works. Okay, so building A, as we've talked about, is the main pro building here. Generally, we talk about the main building and the academy bar. This is where the bulk of the changes have happened. Some of the changes that John mentioned operationally with the removal of the basement loading dock, you'll no longer see the drive, extra drive accessing Prescott here. So now, all access for both parking and deliveries comes through this entry point to Prescott, comes up to the loading dock, which happens right here on
Where you moved it away or both?
Okay. Or, okay, the academy bar. Okay, additional changes that we talked about are the How's that? Better, okay. All right, so removal of additional trees on Stockton. Change in the footprint of building B, the building B footprint changed from roughly 56 feet to 60 feet just due to investigation structurally and what's most efficient in the steel engineering of that. So there's a small growth in that building. The only other additions that I think we've mentioned is through work with the local electrical company. We've moved two transformers, there's a new transformer sitting here next to building A and one sitting back next to building F1.
Brent, did you show where the mechanicals were in the original building versus where they are in this building?
Correct, so the mechanical units for the HVAC system on building A used to sit down here on the southern end of the roof of building A.
And they were on the roof.
Correct, they had a little bit of a screen, but they but they were definitely on the roof and visible. We've now put them inside this roof bulge that you'll see here. I've got in my next exhibit, I'll talk a little bit more about the height of the building. And we can look specifically at where the mechanical is. So with that, I'll go to the next slide. Next page? Okay, we are page four now. This is an elevation diagram, which shows the previously approved elevation with the updated and proposed elevation in the middle and an overlay of the two. So the green line represents the previous approval. And what you'll see on the southern end is the reduction in a single floor's height. This area right here is the area of the third floor in the middle of the building where we've located the mechanical units. That's why the overall height of the building is not reduced at its max point. But on the southern half, it is reduced in height by at least 10 to 15 feet. So with that, I'll go to the next slide, next page. Here are a series of four general views. This is the previous renderings you all would have seen about a year and a half ago. We'll go to the next slide. Here's the updated view, the most obvious foreground.
Just give us the page number each time you flip.
Page six. So we're on page six. Center of building A, you'll see the main entry lobby height is reduced significantly. The main entry was roughly 49 feet originally, we're now at 29 feet. So that's a significant reduction in height and scale. There's a slight materiality change for the academy bar that we noted, where we've removed some green wall just due to long-term maintenance decisions. It was decided to keep just fiber cement panels there, which is what was previously there, but we've removed the the green wall. The other big change on this page is the spectator seating area next to Field Eight. Previously, the spectator seating area was a more formal gathering. Now, we've gone with a more landscape park-like berm approach where we've got a hillside with some concrete benches in. The idea is that parents, spectators might sit on the hillside, sit on the bench. No longer a canopy over it, some landscaping behind, but a much more informal approach to the seating. And the reduction in the capacity was previously at 500 persons, we're down to 300 based on seating. Next page. Page seven, this is the previous view as you enter from Stockton, coming up to the main drop-off. The tall 49-foot lobby there, the spectator seating to the right. We'll go with next page. This is page eight, here's the updated view, reduced lobby height, reduced building height. Still have the academy dorms to the left. And the spectator seating area is really, from this view now, just much more of a landscaped approach. You'll see we adjusted the layout, there were some Red Bull bull sculptures, which the placement of those got adjusted due to the placement of the berm and some of the adjustments in the hardscape in that area. Other thing to note here is the change in the aesthetic of the project is really, you know, previously, we had metal panel wrapped in some solar wood fins. We've kind of removed those fins. There's a lot of reasons for that, one of which is we really no longer needed the views both the east and west side of the building. We've kind of stripped that down and really focused the attention of the building towards the fields and really just made a more of a solid sculptural effect out of the metal panels facing the east. Next slide. All right, and this is the last view. This is the previous view with the
I'm sorry, page?
Page nine, apologies. And so we'll go to the next
This is previous view of
This is previous view, aerial view from the south. With the building A and the spectator seating on the left-hand side. We'll go to the next slide, page 10. We'll see the update to the architecture, reduction in height, smooth curved form to accommodate the mechanical penthouse concealed within the third floor and the less formal seating approach to the hillside there and no longer a canopy to cover. There were some minor landscape changes in the area between here leading up to the academy roof, but those were really just us coordinating landscape and architecture and trying to get out what the right solution was there. I believe that's my last slide architecturally, so with that, I'm complete.
And the sort of presentation worked out in this way? You see the original proposed building and then right after that, what the amendments? But I think so, they're open for questions. I have no further questions. Anything from our board of commissioners?
I have a question. Did you say there was a, I think you said there was an increase in the height of the indoor field structure? Is that correct?
I believe yes, that is the case.
Do you remember what was approved and what is the width of it?
The width?
The width?
The field house?
With the field house?
The width of building B.
But it's still at the same 64, just under
No, 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 wrong building.
Okay.
That's building C, which was the indoor field, which hasn't changed at all.
That's still same height?
Right, so we're talking about the field house, building B, which is adjacent to field A. It got a little wider due to structural steel realities.
Got it. Is there, are there any changes at all to the approved signage?
None.
None, okay. Any changes at all to the approved lighting?
Actually, I should say to the approved signage, we've probably taken away a number of murals and things like that, but we have not made any changes, anything added.
Do we know which murals pertaining to what?
The one that was on building B is definitely taken away, on the north side of building B.
Is that it?
Yeah, I can't think of many other ones.
Okay, and what about lighting?
No changes.
No changes.
Only landscape around the entry, so like pedestrians scale lighting, not not any sight.
Because the shape changed, so there were some changes to bollards and things of that nature. But no, okay, so the low-level life, low-level.
Correct.
Bollards, B-O-L-L-A-R-D-S. That's all I have at this point.
No questions?
Okay, within one second, just to see if they're appropriate for this particular witness. Save that one. Building F3, I believe it's building F3. Is, I think it was a smaller, maybe 1500 square footer there about building. Is that on the plans that maybe have been related to subsequent phasing?
Correct.
Maybe you could explain that and let us know if it's on the plans, where on the plans?
It's, I believe, in the submitted
A little louder in the mic.
It's on the submitted plans as an alternate to the area where buildings D. Okay. Yeah, there's no changes to it, it's the same as it was as previously presented. I can point it out if we got the exhibits up, but it's basically
If it's all, if it's on the plans and there's no changes, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was the case.
Either way.
And again, no, none of the changes triggered any deviations from the zoning other than there are amendments to the approval. That that might be for council as well, but for reconfirmation purposes. Is that correct?
No deviations.
And is there, I don't know if this is the right witness, but I believe there was a change to a agility area, was that addressed or can that be addressed?
It's still in a future phase, it just has not changed in the design at all.
Okay, so there's no changes to the proposed agility area, but it is for a subsequent phase. Was it previously for the first phase?
No, but I believe it was on the overall project for shown on the original drawings, yes.
Has it changed as far as its proposal, proposed phase? Or is it still proposed for the same phase, whatever the prior phase was? If you recall.
I do not recall exactly, we could check, but I believe it was always a future phase.
Engineer, that's fine. The and as as far as noise, the applicant has previous conditions of approval with respect to noise. And they'll still be required to abide by those, including specifically with respect to the new location of the loading area. And if I recall correctly, I believe there was a post-construction, for lack of a better term, audit obligation with respect to noise, assuming my recollection is correct, would the applicant stipulate to that not only remaining, but also specifically focusing on or in addition focusing on the loading area, given its new location?
We're compliant, yeah, we comply with all noise ordinances and we comply with whatever the condition is can be, if you want to forward standard, I'm not sure it needs to be, to the loading area.
It'll it'll apply to the new configuration. Okay, 7 column 29 being the New Jersey administrative code provision for noise, decibel levels. Think, and you get the timing. Oh, you spoke about the change in the timing. Is there, I believe there was an exhibit at least submitted to the board, but I don't know if the specifics of what that timing change is going to be. And it may not need to be addressed in great detail. But if we're amending the GDP to amend the timing schedule therein, we need to hear and see something about what that change is going to be.
That was submitted as part of our application, as part of our application for the amended general development plan, but I think Mr. Amorosa can speak about it now.
Yes, so prior, the initial, looking at the timing schedule, page 17 of the GDP, revised GDP.
To be specific, it was submitted by letter dated April 12, 2024, under the Rekord Danzig Law Firm cover letter, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And and as Exhibit A to that submission, it was the Morris Town planning board's amended general development plan approval dated May 16, 2022, resolution adopted June 20, 2022?
Yes.
Okay, and then there was an Exhibit B to that, I'm anticipating, I guess, but is that the revised timing schedule proposed for the revision to the amended general development plan?
No, Exhibit B is the original from the GDP.
The original?
Yes, Exhibit C, which is the next page, is the new proposed change.
Got it, okay. And maybe it would be best just to perhaps, and I don't want to tell you how to do your, make the presentation, but at least for the benefit of the board and members of the public, maybe an overview of what those changes are?
Sure, so absolutely, not not a problem. As I mentioned, the timing doesn't change. But what we did do to bring the GDP timing schedule in concurrence with the approved planning board approval of November 2022, there were certain items that had to move from one phase to another to comply with that approval. Specifically, in the initial phase, the second item was the construction of the residential academy. That was no longer in the initial phase and that was moved to the second phase. The other thing that needed to be cleaned up was the last item on the construction of fields. The original document indicated that six fields would be constructed in phase one or the initial phase, fields one, two, five, six, seven, and eight, and ancillary components. What that needed to change to was the construction of eight and one-half fields or eight and a half fields, fields being one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven A and eight, and ancillary components. And there was no change to the duration of that initial phase, it's still two years. The second phase, there were a couple of items that needed to change. One of the things was the commencement was originally, it says commences six months after completion of the initial phase. That was revised to commences 12 months after completion of the initial phase. The main item that happened there and just the third item, construction of indoor field, was moved to the third phase. And phase two also concludes includes the construction of the agility area, which remained there. And then the other item that changed was the fields that we had said would be constructed in the second phase were moved up to the initial phase. So their deletion of construction of three fields. So all of the field, well, and also that included fields three, four, and nine. And of course, nine was removed from the initial approval. So that needed to be removed from the second phase duration. And that duration still stays at two years for the second phase. The third phase, which is also two years duration, would commence one year after completion of the second phase. And the only change there was the addition of the construction of the indoor field to that phase. And there are other items, construction of women's pro. And there are other items, construction of women's pro and construction of girls' academy building remained in that phase. Those were the changes. So there, there are no changes to the durations except the lengthening of the time between the completion of the Phase One and the commencement of Phase Two.
Thank you. Couple of other, just for the record, the board did receive a fire official report, no questions or concerns, dated April seventeen, twenty twenty-four, and a site inspection report, no questions or concerns, also dated April seventeen, twenty twenty-four. There was, if I'm not mistaken, a construction official memo dated April eight, twenty twenty-four, and hopefully, well, that, that might be better, well, it's a mix, I guess, of engineer and architect, but if we have, no?
I don't remember receiving that. So that's some specific items from the Building Department related to handicap parking space distribution, accessible routes, you know, we can get you a copy. That seemed pretty straightforward, but some things that need to be coordinated.
I believe the civil engineer could testify to that.
Yeah, it's probably mostly civil engineering, so we could hold it too. So I have nothing further right now. Thank you, Mr. Trent.
I have a couple of questions that I'll start out. One is, kind of dealing with the timing, also I think specifically about when you moved the construction of a half field into where the indoor facility will be. I don't remember that, what was within that space in Phase One in the original.
So it would have remained as a grassed area? So we decided that, you know, might as well make it into a playable area that could be used for the duration before the, the second phase commenced.
And questions from the. Tony, go ahead.
I have just a clarifying question regarding the phases, and may have said this, I apologize if you did. So the second phase and the third phase are both projected to be two-year duration.
Correct.
And is that also true of the initial phase, also two-year iteration?
Well, that was our initial, yeah, so right now we're.
Obviously not from November twenty twenty-two, but from shovel the ground.
So essentially, we put shovels in the ground in April of this year, and we anticipate that substantial completion of the project should be in September of twenty twenty-five. So it's a little, it's about seventeen or eighteen months, not twenty-four months.
I have a question, I guess, really not a question, just a point of clarification for Mr. Amarosa. Regarding, early in, in your testimony, you had mentioned something about a hundred thousand soccer balls and other merch that is going to stay at the Harrison facility. Are you expecting transportations of, of the subset of those to this facility for the youth or the girls, whatever, as part, as they go through your training program?
Well, it's, it's for the youth training programs, so any camps that would be run at the facility would have balls brought there for, for that operation. But generally, you know, a camp has maybe fifty, sixty, a hundred kids or something like that, so it's that kind of subset. And what happens is the coaches that run the camps, they actually have to inflate the balls to bring them to, bring them to the camp. So that, that's how they will be arriving in the back of coaches' cars.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it's not a big truck coming in with those, like, loaded soccer balls.
Well, a lot, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll actually bring them to where they're going because they're much more compact and then inflate them when they, they get there. They have little portable pumps that they bring along with a generator.
Thank you.
I have a question that might be better for the next witness, but I'll, I'll ask it now just in case. And that has to do with the possible review of this revised application by the Environmental Commission. I didn't see any documentation that the Environmental Commission had looked at this. Does anyone have a comment about that?
Yes, they had. We did receive their report, and I believe I addressed all of their, their topics in, in my testimony. I may not have spoken specifically to the environmental report, but I did address what they talked about. And I think the civil engineer will talk a little bit more about native species and things that they wanted to confirm. So there, there are no changes in, in those things.
There are some changes to the plantings, which I thought they might have an opinion about. There are changes to the plantings, which I thought they might have an opinion about.
Yes, their, their opinion was that they wanted to assure that we were not in, in bringing in non-native species, that we were maintaining the native species that we had agreed to. So there's nothing on the no-plant list on the project.
Thank you.
And they have, they have some more questions than that, but Mr. Barrington will get to the landscaping and answer those questions. And we did receive it, it was an April twenty twenty-four memo from the Environmental Commission.
Was that in the package that the board received?
No, we did not see it. I didn't see it in there, so it wasn't online. Question goes to anything else? Well, I have a couple more questions, actually. One, again with the timing, and a little unclear, is that you have, you've moved the construction of the original residential academy program from first phase to second phase.
Correct.
But that's the dorm in Building A, right?
Yes, that would be constructed at later date.
You're not building that building, or you're just building a shell and leaving it in Phase Two?
No, it would be built in Phase Two. It would be built over those wings on that side. It's only a, a second floor, so it bridges over, like, perhaps Brent can explain this a little bit better. But on the east side of that building, there is two, there are two wings, the loading dock now and the other wing of classrooms. The, the dormitory wing bridged over the top of those. And it's, and originally, there was nothing, it was open on the bottom. There was no, no structure on it. So it would be partially open and partially covering the first floor structures. So it, it'll be built up and over, over it in the future.
So Phase One would be the loading dock and the maintenance and all that area, and the classroom?
Yes.
They're on the first floor?
That's correct.
And then the entire would be based in.
Yeah.
And the other, the loading dock, again, you said that this, you felt more comfortable moving it above ground and more exposed, because the total number of trips and the size of the trucks went down significantly from what you had originally planned.
That's correct, yes.
And you've also increased the height of the firm, and I guess we'll get to the landscaping. I guess that'll be part of that. But that was to help compensate for that also.
That's correct.
And agreed that it'll be all the loading dock operation between seven AM and seven PM.
That's correct.
I don't have anything else. Oh, I did have another question. The, the drawings do show solar panels on the roofs, which the old ones did, and that was always, you know, maybe, maybe not. That becomes a decision on that.
Well, solar panels are, are one of those things that have been worked on since we started this project. But it is a, we'd like to have them. There's, just is not the right proposal for many of the organizations that build solar panels, that make it, you know, beneficial, well, makes it beneficial, but not from a, from a monetary standpoint. But the infrastructure to support them is there, so if we do want to add them in the future, we come back for the approval on that, but the, the infrastructure to support them is there.
Yeah, I guess, oh, yeah.
Just, just a quick question. I'm looking at the, the proposed amendment to the timing, and it might be clear to others, but it's not a hundred percent clear to me. The, the last sentence in the lead-in paragraph talks about the time schedule for each subsequent phase shall begin once the previous one has concluded. Suggests to me that there is no delay from, from each one phase to the next. But then below, it talks about a twelve-month delay for, for the subsequent phases. Is this, maybe that's just a point of clarification that needs to be made.
Yes, I agree. The last sentence says the time schedule for each subsequent phase shall begin once the previous one has concluded. And then phases do have those stipulations in it that the second phase commences twelve months after the first one, and the third commences one year after the second one. So I think it's pretty clear that there is a step between the two. But really what it's telling you is there's no overlap between the phases.
Right. And, and then the other question I have is not on the applicant, application itself, but it's more to the intent of Red Bulls. I think you stated before that the front office is going to remain in Harrison.
Correct.
Is, is it now the intention to continue to view the Harrison location as the headquarters for Red Bulls? Or will the township be considered headquarters?
I, I would leave that to the business side to state that, but I, I, I think that you can assume that the, the front office operation is in Harrison, and that's where the front office operation is.
Okay, but you can't speak to that?
No, I can't speak to it.
Well, then I would, we'll open it up, or anything, anything else from the question? And then we'll open it up for questions from the public of these witnesses, of these two witnesses. Please step up and state your name and address. Any questions that you may ask of these witnesses.
Hi, Alfred Dimiero, two Aldrich Court. I was just wondering, D-I-M-I-E-R-O. I was just wondering for the architect. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Alfred Dimiero, two Aldrich Court, and it's D-I-M-I-E-R-O. We're at the, we're right on Stockton, facing west. And I noticed in all your renderings, we didn't see what that facade looks like that we would be looking at, assuming there was no firm and plantings. Do you have any renderings of what that facade side looks like?
I don't, I don't have any renderings of that view. There are elevations in the packet, but there are renderings with the landscape there showing that the landscape will effectively block the view of that elevation.
Could you describe it just briefly, what it's?
It's made up of two primary materials, so a metal panel and a fiber cement panel, looking very similar to one of the exhibits. I think page, page eight of the exhibit would give the best indication of the elevation of that view, where you have up high, oh, thank you, they're pulling up that exhibit right now. So page eight, please.
Okay, I see.
Right. So you've got the metal panel there, which in this view looks a little bluer than in reality I think it's going to be. That arches up and over the academy bar and then extends further south with the fiber cement making up the lower third, or the, the lower floor, where the bulk of the entry doors and other things happen on that floor.
Okay. Will that metal panel be reflecting a lot of sunlight?
No, it is, it is, I would call it a silver gray, but it is by no means polished or mirrored or anything like that.
Okay.
So I think it's fairly traditional what you would see on a building.
But what you're saying is it, it doesn't look like a warehouse. It's a nice facade.
Absolutely. It has patterning in it, and I think you could see that in the, in the submitted documents that are part of the package.
Thank you.
Hi, Patricia Collins, four Green Knoss Road. Excuse me, quick question. The generic court that's going to be next to the basketball court, the tennis court, what is that for? It's, it's not defined, it just says generic. What kind of a court is it?
It's meant for any type of athletic use. It could be used for soccer, tennis. It could be used for pickleball. It could be used for basketball. It could be used for anything, but it's just generic in nature. It's a surface area for the academy athletes to, to play on.
Okay, just wanted that clarification. And once again, there'll be no lights on that, because we have assurance there'll be no lights on the basketball.
There's no change, there's no change to the lighting.
So there's no lights?
Correct.
Thank you. That's it.
Other questions from the public? Call the next witness?
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Barrington, would you give your name and address for the record?
Richard Barrington, from WSP. Business address is three five zero Mount Kemble Avenue, Morristown, New Jersey.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience and whether you've been accepted as an expert in front of this board and others?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer in New Jersey and several other states. I've appeared before several boards in the state of New Jersey, and I was approved as an expert before this board in the previous, for previous testimony.
I would ask that you be accepted again as an expert in civil engineering.
Accepted.
Thank you. So you give the board the benefit of both the landscaping and the engineering details and, and the amendments, basically, that were asked before you.
Correct. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do three things with my testimony. I'm gonna go through the landscape changes that were made. I'm gonna go through some of the site changes that were made, different site things, different utility things. And then there were a few comments from the Environmental Commission and the Building Department that I want to make sure we touch on as well.
And before you go through that, are you going to be referring to some exhibits?
Yes.
In your testimony? And can you describe what they are, how many pages, et cetera?
Yes, there's another packet, a fourteen-page packet, that I'll use for, for landscape and civil testimony.
And we'll refer to that as Exhibit Eight Two, and it's a compendium, my favorite word. It looks like it's fourteen pages, is that correct?
Correct.
I reserve the right to have another favorite word or two, but thank you.
So I can start while they're pulling it up. I have a general introduction as well. So in terms of the overall landscape plan for the site, I, I think what you've seen are several changes. There's been changes to the number of trees and shrubs. There's been changes to the species types. And there's been changes to the, the understory, the shrubs, perennials, things like that. So what I'm going to try to do is just go through the different numbers, then I'll talk about different areas, and I'll just try to go piece by piece in terms of the landscape changes. So the original application that we did provided essentially replacement ratio of one thousand one hundred and ninety-six, okay? That doesn't mean we were proposing one thousand one hundred and ninety-six trees. We were actually planting six hundred and sixty-five trees. The requirement gets to over a thousand because when, some trees were larger than others and you get bigger credit the larger your trees are. So the previous application had six hundred and sixty-five trees for, and I'll call it a, a credit ratio of eleven ninety-six. With the new amendment, we're proposing six hundred and twenty-nine trees. So we're only reducing the tree count by roughly thirty-six. However, we are using smaller trees in many areas, which the total effective ratio is eight oh eight, which is much less than the eleven ninety-six. In terms of how that breaks out, mostly in terms of we've, we've reduced fifty-nine deciduous trees. We've reduced two flowering trees, but we've increased evergreen trees by twenty-five. So there's been a lot of changes in terms of the types of trees. In terms of the ratio, you know, what we said before, which was going from eleven ninety-six to eight oh eight, the difference from that, that fifty-nine deciduous tree reduction amounts to a hundred and twelve total points. Ironically, the, even though we've increased the evergreen trees by twenty-five, because generally they're smaller throughout, that's attributable to two hundred and seventy-four points lower than what we had before on evergreens. So we've increased evergreen trees, but technically it's, it's less points because they're smaller trees. So those are some of the numbers. So let me go back to where, where are things? Next, next page, please, and that'll be Page Two. Okay, so one of the points Mr. Amarosa made in terms of where, where the change is made. So what this figure shows is, is two things, and we're showing in essentially green colored with the, the green dotted lines. Those are the key buffers. with the, the green dotted lines, those are the key buffer areas. Those are areas when we did the original design that really we paid the most attention to. We tried to look at sight lines, we looked at different tree sizes, there was a blend of deciduous and evergreen trees in those areas. Really no changes to the number of trees where they are to the design in that area. So that, those were areas we tried to really maintain the buffer and I'll show you, we do have perspectives to demonstrate that particularly on the Aldrich Court side of the project. Where are the reductions? So again, we talked about reductions and you can see in with the orange shapes, effectively there's a few areas where we did make reductions. And I'll go through some of the numbers on the reductions as well. So the entrance to Stockton Drive.
Highlight those because it's difficult to see.
Yes. The first area I want to talk about is really the, the entrance to the site coming off of Colombian into Stockton. Essentially there were street trees planted there, we're removing those street trees. That accounts for roughly 23, most of those were deciduous trees. The second location I want to really point out is really near the Red Bull driveway and I'll point that out. So the Red Bull driveway, really around the driveway and opposite side of the street, we designed the project to try to maintain the existing trees in those areas. So previously we did have some tree, we, we tried to plan in the understory and I think looking at it, I think the landscape architect said, you know what? It's really mature trees going in there and trying to beef up that area with more trees, probably not a great idea. So we've removed those trees. That accounts for a net, another 13 trees lost really in that area. The next area I want to talk about are street trees along Stockton next to the Deildren cap area. Deildren, D I E L D R I N. Next to Stockton Drive. So this is an area we looked at again and essentially putting, we tried to minimize trees in there because for every tree we dig there, we're digging through an environmental cap. So certainly minimizing that was, was something of interest to that. Street trees lost along the Deildren cap area were, were 12 trees. The last area I want to really point out in terms of trees that we, we eliminated was near the service area where looking at some of the islands that we had between sidewalk and between the utility yard, in many cases we had maybe five or six feet with fencing and it, as the design developed, it just didn't look like a great place to try to jam in trees in those areas. We did maintain the buffer, I think called the, the green knoll buffer that we had put in there. No changes to that area as well. Those were really, that's where we lost our trees. Next thing I want to talk about was that big number in terms of where did we downsize things. And I think Mr. Amorosa pointed out before, trying to look at survivability of things. So there were numerous areas on the site where we had proposed, for example, junipers. The example I want to give is fields one, two, three, and four along, along Prescott. In the original design, we proposed junipers eight to 10 feet high and the new design, we're proposing junipers seven to eight feet. All in all, that's almost a thousand foot stretch of junipers lining all those fields. Reducing that juniper border results for roughly a change of 218 from where we were before to there. So of that total ratio difference, a lot of it is due to taking those junipers and dropping them down from eight to 10 to seven to eight. The second major example I want to give in terms of tree sizing is with the original design, we had a series of 18 to 20 foot Norway spruces that were designed along the perimeter of building A. And we revised the design for those trees to be 10 to 12 feet instead of 18 to 20. Working with our contractor, talking about survivability, there's a lot of logistics that go in with those 18 to 20 foot trees and we just feel that 10 to 12, they've got a greater chance of survival in maintaining that border in the long term. The last thing I want to point out, really in terms of the, the redesign and tree sizing is we did redesign the berm to increase the height maximum of four feet. No changes to the, the types of trees, there were some species changes which I'll talk about next, but generally that design remained intact. There were some species changes. Do want to just reiterate what Mr. Amorosa said, everything that's proposed now is, is on the allowable list, there's nothing from the do not plant list, but there were some eliminations. Species eliminated included the Queen Elizabeth maple, sugar maple, hop hornbeam, and the Austrian pine. Species added included hornbeam, which was a substitution for hop hornbeam, the autumn blaze maple, and a fairly large increase in red maples. So essentially we got rid of two maples and we've substituted those with different maples. That's really summary of the trees, just trying to talk a bit little bit about some of the changes with shrubs and ground cover as well. Some changes in just in terms of sizes. For example, the site had a lot of areas with perennials and we've downsized those plantings, giving you an example, a lot of areas with cap mint. Where we proposed five gallon cap mint plantings, those are down to one gallon pots. Another example of a shrub change was we had a row of boxwoods between fields seven and eight. I think looking at that and realizing that boxwoods and soccer balls don't necessarily blend well together, those boxwoods have been eliminated in favor of holly trees. So just changing things like that to try to, as the design developed. The other, one of the other large changes we made was again size. We had green giants at 18 to 20 feet around several areas, we've subbed those out for 10 to 12 foot green giants. And again, a lot of this is survivability, especially something like green giants that grow so quickly, you thought ultimately it benefited to try to get something that's going to survive rather than take a chance on larger shrubs. Okay.
Now, Mr. Barrington, before you go further, I don't know if you remember, but in the original application and during the original hearings, I think the homeowners association hired a landscape architect expert. And I think his one, one of his criticisms, his only real criticism was that he thought some of the trees that we were getting may be too mature and have survivability issues. Do you remember that?
Exactly. His concern was.
Plant branch out, right?
Yes, that he pointed out rightly so, that the larger trees or shrubs you start with, their chances of survival do get less and less the larger they get. And that especially plants or shrubs that do grow rather fast, you're almost better off getting something a little smaller, maintaining it and letting it, letting it transition in. So, okay. So the next thing I want to do is really goes through some of the perspectives and similar to what Brent did, it'll be a before and then an after perspective. So next page, page three. So this is essentially Stockton Drive, this is the original. Looking down, you can see almost in the background, you've seen building A is really immediate on the other side of the street. Okay, next page, page four. This is the after, you can denote in the background a change in the building materials that Mr. Kutchell referenced. You can also pick up, there is an increase in the, the berm height when you directly compare the two perspectives. Okay? You will note, like I said too, the trees are the same trees, no change to the trees. Next page, page five. This is the night view, the original night view. Next page, page six. And this is the revised night view for that whole area. Okay? Next page, page seven. Similar area, just looking, looking directly out and you can see almost the tan of the building again in the background. Next page, page eight. Okay? You can detect the, the silver in the building and as Mr. Kutchell mentioned, the maximum height of the building is the same. You're seeing the maximum height of the building in this area, but you're also noticing that the berm is higher in this building, but there's no change to the trees. Next page, page nine. Okay? And this is the, the, the one-year growth rendering from this perspective, same area. You can see the, the brown of the original building and next page, page 10. And you can see in, in this picture, this is the one-year growth, the berm higher, at least from this perspective, does make a difference. And next page, page 11. Moving a little bit further, further south, this is the original view. Okay? Next page, page 12. Okay? And you can see the berm got a little bit higher again, this is the, the amended, the new rendering. And next page, page 13. Okay? And this is the one-year growth from that angle. Again, the tan is the original building. Okay? Next page, page 14. Okay? And in this picture you see, I think this is a good one because you see what Mr. Kutchell described, how the maximum height stays the same, but the majority of the building is smaller and in this case the higher berm combined with the lesser, lesser height of the, the backside of the building does make a pretty tangible difference. So those are the renderings and I guess what I'd like to do now is go back to page one. Great. Okay, so talking through some of the site changes, there were a variety of site changes on the site. Walkways, there were several areas on the site where widths changed, material types changed, a few examples of those. The drop-off area next to building A, which was a small five or six parking stall space, that originally was going to be pavers, we've changed that to asphalt, change in site pathways. So there's a walkway between fields five and six. That was reduced from 20 to 16 feet and it was concrete seating next to field five in the original application that was eliminated. So that's also another reduction in impervious area. Addressing one of the comments from the environmental commission, the total impervious coverage for the site decreased from 23% to 22.9%. This is due to some of the changes we made in terms of taking some of the walkways, trimming them down a little bit. So the total impervious coverage is smaller now, even though the building coverage increased slightly. So there was that much reduction to, to compensate from the increase in the building coverage. There were adjustments to fencing due to the, the changes with the loading dock, the elimination of the, the previous loading dock drive, changed the fence line a little bit in that area. One thing also to note with building A, we did create a small, it's called a wellness garden, it's essentially a small fenced-in patio outside of building A that was not there Next, one of the other things we did in response to one of the comments from the, from Morristown Chip was several of the, the EV spaces that we had previously on site, we moved those around in the parking lots. Generally those were a little further away from the doors, those were moved essentially closer to the front door, primarily in the pro parking lot and in the, the phase one parking lot. So the same numbers there, just things were shifted around a little bit. Utility changes, several changes in terms of utilities, water distribution. Southeast Morris County MUA had some comments in terms of which fire hydrants they wanted, thought should be public hydrants versus private hydrants. There's no changes to any of the hydrant locations or the number of hydrants. However, we did have some discussion in terms of what will be public versus private, which did change some of the underground distribution in terms of what is being fed from where. JCP and L and electricals.
If I may interrupt and I guess I just did, Mr. Chairman, thank you though for the post hoc permission. The, the, you were on the SM CM U A letter, that's the May 6, 2024 letter you're referring to with respect to the approvals that you're seeking from them.
I would say we've been working with them over the, on and off of the past year, so.
The reason I ask is I got one in the package and I was wondering if the comment, the comments therein read for under site plan and then water service sizing and backflow prevention, we're going to be satisfied or if not, otherwise you would be ultimately satisfying them to get the approval.
We're planning to ultimately satisfy them, yes.
Okay, you can't speak to the specifics of what's in the May 6, 2024 letter?
They're still reviewing information that we've given them and providing comment back and forth.
Okay, so if there's an approval, condition of approval.
Correct.
Thank you.
We've been working with JCP and L in terms of the electrical service and there has been a little bit of a change. Originally the planned electrical service was going to come in from the middle of the site and come up near the, near Stockton into a central transformer substation area. Essentially JCP and L had requested that we move that incoming service to the service road location. So we've moved that incoming service to that location. There will be no central transformer substation anymore. There will be one transformer near building F1 that serves one part of the site and there will be a second transformer near building A that serves building A. So that's been coordinated with, with JCP and L. In terms of the, the building F1 utility yard, just noting as, as part of those changes, that transformer does go there. A transformer is being placed in the same location, there was a previous chiller. The chiller was a subject of a bulk variance previously. The new transformer would essentially be in the same spot as that chiller, but that transformer would require the same variance relief that the chiller had had. So essentially we're swapping out the chiller for the transformer, but it was subject to a variance.
Both, if I may, Mr. Chairman, counsel both accessory structures, therefore it's in essence the same variance or deviation that was previously approved?
Correct.
Okay, and I, just for confirmation, if I may, from our planner, Mr. Phillips, would you concur?
I would.
Thank you.
Okay. And just noting the chiller was eliminated because they've changed essentially as, as the building design has developed and building B, building F1, that the mechanical design has developed and those won't be served by a chiller anymore. Field, what we're calling seven A, so essentially where the indoor half field was, we're proposing in phase one an outdoor grass field. The original proposal essentially had a level grass area, so we're proposing essentially a half soccer field in that area.
Is it the same size? In other words, is it still a half field?
It's the same exact size.
Outside, not inside.
Correct.
Thank you.
They'll.
Sorry. Yeah. Point out where that is. That's seven A.
Seven A.
It will be an indoor field.
It will be in subsequent phase, correct. Okay. Just a few other things just to run through, there were some environmental commission item questions that I did want to make sure everybody understood. One was to clarify the impervious coverage, which we do have a slight increase in the impervious coverage from 23 to 22.9.
Slight decrease.
Then there was another question about clarification of the replacement trees and the requirement. The requirement was 720 and previous plan included 665 trees with a ratio of 1196, which the 1196 exceeded the 720. The amended plan includes 629 trees with a ratio of 808. 808 is still higher than the, the 720 requirement. In terms of, there is nothing we're proposing on the do not, not plant list. I'll say some of the species that were subbed out were, were done in favor of things that are more local, more regionally available. Meadow mix, there was a clarification in terms of the meta mix to just clarify that this is being used in lieu of grasses, perennial and ground cover and that is correct. There is a greater use of meadow mix on this property, it is a native meadow mix to be used. And I guess the last, last question, we've probably said it a few times now, but yes, everything is on, there's nothing on the do not plant list that's on the amended landscape plan at this point, so. I'll say some of the species that were subbed out, we're done in favor of things that are more local, more regionally available. Meadow mix, there was a clarification in terms of the meadow mix to just clarify that this is being used in lieu of grasses, perennial and ground cover, and that is correct. There is a greater use of meadow mix on this property. It is a native meadow mix to be used. And I guess the last question, we've probably said it a few times now, but yes, everything is on, there's nothing on the do not plant list that's on the amended landscape plan at this point, so.
And they asked actually, will there be more runoff because of the concrete in the bleachers instead of the, and how is that being handled? I assume it's not.
It'll actually be less, there's more, I'll say, pervious area over there than there was previously. The previous concept had a canopy and was all structure. There's less impervious area over in that seating area now than there was. And that's it.
Yep, I have no further questions.
Yeah, just, Mr. Adam Rose, I asked a question about lighting and you said there were no changes other than perhaps some of the low-level bollards type lighting. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. Yeah, so the area, because we changed some of the sidewalk and planting areas in the entry area, entry plaza area, it eliminated some of the bollards and some of them were reconfigured. There also were some that were within the site that are really not necessary because of the field lighting at night or the, you know, that are not occupied areas that would require them. But the primary change was in the entry plaza area where the bollards were reduced.
Overall, is there a reduction?
Probably yes, yeah.
That's all I had.
On your renderings, there were some views that showed more growth. I don't recall, but it's public. What was the, how far out was that growth projected to evolve?
Five years. So there were some one-year renderings and five-year renderings.
No other questions?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Are you able to address the Building Department memo? And if, there's four, five items, I can run through them real quick.
Yes, we're willing to work with the construction individual to resolve, as we've spoken to him already and have resolved several of them.
If the charging stations for cars by accessible parking spaces can be satisfied?
Yes.
Parking lot with 216 spaces has four accessible parking spaces, should be seven, can be satisfied?
We've clarified the design to the official, so there'll be no changes on that item.
A parking lot for Building F has no accessible parking spaces, is that still the case and is that?
That will be corrected.
That will be corrected.
Yes.
Site plan doesn't show accessible paths to buildings, that'll be satisfied?
That'll be clarified, yeah.
And Building A accessible space is not closest to the building?
Will also be clarified, that was unclarified, yeah.
And. One second. The, in the event the board were so inclined, would the applicant be able to stipulate to consolidation of lots 4 and 5 at least prior to CO?
Yes.
A CO being certificate of occupancy for members of the public. Nothing further, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Couple of questions I'll start off with. You mentioned landscaping. You talked about removing trees. You're talking about removing them from the planting list. You're not removing any more existing trees?
Correct.
No, all trees that have, were going to be taken, have been taken down.
720 number that stays the same.
Correct.
Removing them from the planting list.
Correct.
Right, and to point out, that also includes trees that were removed previously from the site by previous developers, not just from lots 4 and 5, but it's a total. So we're kind of, you know, because we're last in line, we're.
And then you mentioned reducing the size of the junipers along that fence along Prescott Drive from maybe 10 feet to 7 to 8 feet. How wide is the fences?
The fence itself will be 10 feet high, and it will also have a scrim on it. And then there's also ball netting that's on that that goes up to 30 feet, so it's quite a bit, quite tall.
And again, with the renderings, the small amount of the buildings that showed through there, even in the one year, wasn't that the second floor of the dorm that was showing through primarily? That wouldn't be there at one year yet?
That's correct, but you would see the second floor of the other building.
The plantings will be done before that one year, kind of, just looking at the timing.
We started construction on that berm today, actually, and our intention is to try to plant that at the latest in the fall so that we, you know, we'll have a full years of growth on it before, before year.
Okay, so some of that is rendering, we won't be able to see.
Hopefully, yes. Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chairman, yes, one question. With all the ratios and amounts reduced and all the trees and stuff, I guess my question is, is there, was it before or still a requirement for a contribution to attach a tree program? Or will those be additional contributions?
We satisfied it by planting trees on site.
You satisfied all that?
Yeah.
I wanted to know why you removed from the plan the trees that you had planned to plant along the entrance way.
The primary reason for that was that we kept looking at it and we decided that it was a much better viewscape for it to be open than to be lined with trees.
A viewscape from where?
From the, from the, somebody driving up the roadway, they can see out to the grass on either side, to the trees that are further set back. We decided a more open, more inviting view instead of a tree-lined street.
A corridor.
Yeah, a corridor.
Then I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the berm. So the berm will be four feet higher than you had previously planned? Will it be any wider? It seems like you're going to need to have steeper slopes leading up to the top of the berm, is that true?
The slopes are maximized at a certain slope that allows us to still plant trees on it. So the width is roughly the same, but we have steepened it up, but it's about as steep as we can go right now and still plant trees on it.
And the types of trees that you're planting there will accommodate a kind of a humped surface that you're planting them on, even though they're pretty large trees when they're mature, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's a two and a half on one side slope, which allows you to plant on the side slope, it allows you to plant on the top of the berm. And that, at that slope, you can not only plant, but you can maintain. It's about eight feet. About eight feet wide at the top of the berm.
And the overall width of the berm is not changing?
No.
Is that true? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Open up the questions to the public?
Yes, again, Alfred Dimiro, 2 Aldridge Court, D-I-M-I-R-O. You spoke about the survivability of the trees, and I was just wondering, what obligation, if any, will the Red Bulls have to replace a planting that doesn't survive?
Well, with the landscape contracting purchases, we have at least a one-year warranty from the landscape planter, and then, you know, ultimately, it's our responsibility to maintain the buffers and to maintain the trees. You know, we're certainly not going to let trees die and not replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that not a condition of approval?
There are about 100 or so, so.
I think everybody concurs it was in the original approval.
Any other questions?
Larry Kessler, 1 Aldridge Court. The transformer that's going to be built, will that be seeable from the street or will it be blocked by vegetation or something?
The location in the transformer will be essentially adjacent to the loading dock and within those two wings, so will not be visible from the street, it'll be screened. There's also fencing around it as well, and the transformer itself is probably, I'll say, no taller than six feet, but that's a gas at this point.
The fencing that you put up now, I assume that's temporary fencing, and will it be replaced by vegetation or what's going to replace it?
Yes, the fence that encircles the site now is the temporary fencing that we talked about and is part of the original resolution, and that will be removed once the areas are complete, construction is completed. Along Stockton, most of that that you'll see will be vegetation along that side. The actual security fences are on the other side of the berm, so you won't see any fencing along Stockton.
Okay, so the security fences won't be visible from the street?
I won't testify to the complete clarity of that, but probably from a good portion of Stockton, it won't be visible, probably, possibly as you get to the corner of Stockton and Prescott, if you look to your right, you would see it.
Okay, last thing, whoever wants to answer it. Once all this is done, what's your grand opening projection date?
September, September 2025.
Thank you.
Don't hold me to it.
Hi, good evening, Kathy Wilson, 20 Beach Road Drive. So as a follow-up to the no changes in the lighting, I wanted to ask, connecting with the original approval, I'm assuming that the Red Bulls are still committed to obtaining the IDA certification?
It was a condition of the original approval, so yes, we are.
Condition 21.
Correct, it is 21, and when I read 21, it just says obtain dark sky certification. And as I thought back about what was approved, there's, there's two levels of certification, okay, and the Red Bulls agreed to both. One was Phase 1 design analysis and the other was Phase 2 field verification. So Level 1 was supposed to take place after the design was finalized, and Level 2 was supposed to take place after the construction was completed. So I wanted to confirm that that's still part of the plan?
That's correct, it is still part of the plan. We have recently finalized contracts with Musco Sports Lighting, and so they're completing that portion of the design right now. We should have that documentation within the next couple of months.
Thank you. Do you think it would be advisable, maybe this is a question for our professionals, to include the Level 1, Level 2 in the item number 21 on the resolution? Because of, you know, a common reader of this would not realize that distinction.
We, we under, if I may, as the 21, we understand it to mean quote-unquote full doc, dark sky certification, i.e. Level 1 and 2. But certainly, if the applicant stipulates, we can reference that for clarification purposes in the amended approval. And if the applicant doesn't stipulate to it, perhaps it's something the board wishes to impose. How's that for leverage?
Wow, that's a little bit of leverage. Yes, we'll stipulate to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for. By the way, I just want to say, we would never challenge Ms. Wilson. Because she knew that dark sky will. That, that'll be a condition in the, in the resolution in perpetuity. Challenge. The, but speaking of in perpetuity, just to alleviate any concern, an earlier question, condition 23, the applicant and any successors shall maintain a level of trees and other landscape buffering and screening as stated in the testimony in perpetuity. So, so it was a condition and it remains a condition by stipulation. If there are no further public questions and applicant rests her direct case, then public comment. Summation after public comment. No further witnesses? No further witnesses, no further questions. Public comment.
Okay, we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, I guess we could move to the summation.
Well, my summation will be short. I, we started this a while ago, and I think the Red Bulls really feel that home now. We see a bunch of our friends here from the, from even before the hearings, because we were meeting them in public meetings at the hotel, et cetera, and it took us a while to get here. We had some fits and starts, but it was a really respectful and collaborative process. And just today, Carrie Cohen, who's the counsel to the Red Bulls, said, because we were initially looking at, they were initially looking at some property in Hanover, she said, you know, I'm really glad that fell through because I really love this site and this property much better. So we're all very happy and we'd ask that the board approve the amendment requests. And remember, Steve, you'll take care of the two votes, one for the GDP timing and the second for the site plan approval amendments.
In that order, yes.
Yes. Would it help if we addressed the, sure, after the comments?
Chairman, I'd like to congratulate the Red Bulls on what they've changed that have less impact on the area, and also have very good job addressing all of our concerns.
Thank you.
What, after? Yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you go.
Well, we have two votes.
We have two votes.
So, and in the appropriate order, the first one would be with respect, and it'll be one resolution, will be but two votes. With respect to the request by the applicant to amend the amended GDP, which is reflected in a resolution as well as a GDP document, the resolution having been adopted in June of 2022, the amended general development plan approval. The request for an amendment is with respect to an extension of the proposed timing schedule as set forth on Exhibit C of the submission to the, by the applicant and consistent with Section 45.4 of the municipal land use law. Board certainly has discretion to grant the modification of the timing schedule, and in fact, only this board can, has the authority to grant same. So as a predicate, if the board is amenable, the board will vote, and if it's a majority, then the board will have amended the GDP timing schedule in accordance with Exhibit C of the submission.
I'll entertain a motion, Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Someone's slipping.
Okay, so it's a roll call vote.
Yeah. It's Ben Aldrich. Yes, it's the Brown.
Yes.
It's the rabbit?
Yes.
It's Marty, yes. It's the one?
Yes.
It's the Corland?
Yes.
It's the Riddick, yes. It's the bike?
Yes. And the second?
The second one's a little longer, bear with me. It's a motion to amend the preliminary and final major site plan approval, which approval also at the time had variance relief and design waiver relief. It was dated. It was dated November 14, 2022. Resolution memorialized a full week later, November 21, 2022. And the amendments are as set forth in the application with no variance relief, no design waiver relief. In the event the board grants such amendments. In the event the board grants such amendments, the conditions would include the following: the construction officials' memo, satisfaction of the five items therein, satisfaction of all outside agency approvals, including the SMCMUA. The limit of delivery time will be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The, at the loading dock, that will be the same for trash and recycling, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Noise ordinance compliance will continue, and the noise audit condition in the prior approval will continue, including with respect to the change in the location of the loading dock and in the other reconfigurations of the site. All prior conditions of the, of, all conditions of the prior approval will remain in effect to the extent not inconsistent, not inconsistent, right, to the extent not inconsistent with this approval. There will be a clarification with respect to the dark sky compliance inclusive of both Level 1 and Level 2. And the lots four and five will be consolidated prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy. Please let me know what I missed. No, Jim? No?
The building department, you covered a lot.
I covered the building department, yeah. Yeah, I think I got them all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the amended application with both stipulations and guidelines of our attorney, Mr. Warner.
He's back.
Before we vote, any discussion, any comments now? Mr. Rabbit?
I just want to say, I, when this first, this project first came to the Township Committee, I was new on the Township Committee, and I just kind of thought that it was like the greatest thing since sliced bread, bringing a professional team to our, to our town and kind of putting us on the maps as Morris Township, and it has been a pleasure. I wasn't on the planning board in '22 when this was approved, but I have to say that in dealing with the Red Bulls, I am so looking forward to the opening day, September 2025, and just being, having the Red Bulls in this town is just going to be wonderful, and we're looking forward to being able to capitalize on the Red Bulls being here in every way we can possibly do for our residents, so it's a pleasure to, you know, to approve this when it comes down to a vote, so thank you all.
Chairman, I'm actually newer than Mr. Rabbit, so as mayor of Morris Township, I number one want to commend the Red Bulls, can't tell you how excited we are to have them here, how we want to continue this relationship, but I also want to commend everyone in this room, including not only the Town to Professional staff, everybody involved, everybody on the planning board, and especially to the residents who came forward with your concerns. And I wasn't on the planning board, but I would listen in on all the plant note through Zoom, and to me, I just felt that at the end of the day, this really was like a textbook example of how everybody can work together and try to do the very best for the township. So we are all extremely excited, we can't wait to be there the day that the Red Bulls have their grand opening. So thank you to everybody, and we will, the township will support you every way we can moving forward.
Any things else? I would just like to second that on what they've said in many ways. One, the original application was kind of a long drawn-out process. I think it all worked out, and then when I heard you were coming back, I was glad you were going back. So I was pleased to see that the, you know, the changes are reasonable in many ways of reduction, reduce some of the problems and some of the issues that were there, you know, that we dealt with before, so it was just nice to see, and there are things that aren't, I think were addressed in a reasonable and rational fashion, so I certainly would support it. But I'd also like to second the thanks to the, you know, everyone here involved, and especially the public for coming out and all those prior meetings and then coming out again, and truly contributing to the, to the project and to the way it turned out. It's, I'd say it can be long drawn out, and again, apologize for, and appreciate your patience for tonight specifically for the delay that you've still sat through, but appreciate it all, so thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alleso?
Yes.
It's Ben Oder, yes. It's the flowers?
Yes.
It's the rabbit?
Emphatic, yes.
It's Marty?
Yes.
It's the one.
Yes.
It's Quillen?
Yes.
It's the Riddick, yes. It's the bike?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Nick, don't forget to get your frequent testifier card punch so you can get a pizza later.